In compliance with Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, the title of the Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as specified in the act. The proper notice of this public meeting was provided at the notice of January 5, 2017. Said notice was posted at the entrance of the Board of Education office in Nutley Township Clerk, advertised in Nutley Sun and Star Ledger on January 12, 2017, posted on the district website. This is an official meeting. We all rest our glasses.
(inaudible) Mr. Valzner.
Here.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin, here. Mr. Corra.
Here.
Mr. Klein.
Here.
Mrs. Zinkowski.
Here.
Mrs. Russo, here. Mrs. Scolara. Ms. Sherman, here. Mr. Carnesella.
Here.
Do we have to review the minutes?
So.
Sort of. All papers?
Aye.
Any correspondence this evening?
No.
Okay, so we're going to start off with the presentations for this evening. The first presentation will be done by Mr. Patel, who is the kids' coordinator.
Thank you. We have ninety minutes.
Thank you, Ian. As part, good evening, everyone. My name is Joe Patel. I'm the anti-bullying coordinator for the Nutley School District. Dr. Glazer and I are required, asked for the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights, to conduct through the board in public, our self-assessment. At the conclusion of each school year, each school's safety team must conduct a self-assessment. The state of New Jersey, Department of Education provides us with a forty-one-page room brick with eight core elements. Each core element has indicators. I will show them briefly in the next slide. Each with each indicator, there's categories to rate yourselves. As you can see, the rating scale is below from a scale of zero, from zero to three. Based upon your, how you grade yourself, how you rate yourself, each school district, each school is supposed to provide sample documentation. So it's not just providing a grade, but you are also supposed to have, you are required to have sample documentation. Here are the first four core elements. Core element number one, the first one which I see as being one of the most important ones, it's all about prevention and intervention. What can we do to prevent it? What programs are we doing? And also, as well as how do we assess our programs, approaches, and initiatives? Core element number two focuses on training. Core element number three, providing instruction, not only to the students, but the staff, as well as the parents as well. Core element number four is the curriculum, that we are providing ongoing age-appropriate instruction to students, as well as we are observing the Week of Respect, which is the first week in October. Core element number five discusses personnel in each school. Core element number six discusses the incidents, what are the reporting procedures. Number seven discusses the investigation procedure. Following that, making sure it's verbally reported, within two days, there's a written report, and you have up to ten days to conduct the investigation. A written report which is prepared by the anti-bullying specialist, and then submitted to Dr. Glazer. Core element number eight, as well as ensuring staff members report the required information, as well as making sure that when we do, our district and school receives the grade, that we are posting it on the district website immediately. So here are the core elements. Happy to say, we are meeting the criteria, satisfying criteria for each core element. Some may not be above the criteria, but we are meeting each criteria. As you can see, in the last column, the max score for each school is a seventy-eight. Regarding our policy and procedure, annually, we review, we assess, we provide recommendations. And as I said earlier, for me, and I think for all the anti-bullying specialists and the school's safety teams, core element number one, and I believe it was core element number four, which is providing age-appropriate instruction on HIV prevention. It's always about what can we do to improve. We're always looking to improve our prevention and our intervention efforts. After this evening, if the board approves our grades, Dr. Glazer then submits it electronically to the state. There's a statement of insurances, which also includes this evening's Board of Ed, the date of this evening's presentation. Once the grades are received, we have ten days to post them on the district website. Usually, they're provided the week before our break, before our December break, so usually the first week in January, January second or third, I will be posting them on the district website. Thank you.
And thank you. You're always so nice to include me in the presentation, but you know you like it. So thank you so very much.
You're welcome.
No questions for Mr. Patel?
No.
Just want to plug in. (laughter) Thanks. The next thing we're going to do is strategic plan update. We're at the end of our fifth year of the strategic plan. It's hard to believe. I almost can't believe it myself. I'm going to stay here, because you're going to see that we have a lot of people on our team who are presenting tonight. So I'm going to start here with the first couple of slides, if you don't mind, Ian, and the lights and everything, and then we will move into the actual action team. So let me just say that, for me, I couldn't be more excited about this presentation. I've only been here a year, but this, as I said, this action team is completing five years of working on these goals, and they've done an exceptional job, not only of maintaining the focus, but more importantly, of making progress on each of these goals. I'm also pleased to say that I think we've kept the momentum going with a lot of change this year at the leadership team level. And the people you're going to hear from tonight are really the ones that have earned the much-deserved credit for not only completing this plan, but for the progress. Tonight, we did invite former superintendent Russell Razovic and Assistant Superintendent Gina Valani, who began this process. Unfortunately, they couldn't join us tonight. They have their own board meeting in Bridgewater to attend. But I'm really pleased to have with us Dr. William Librera, who was able to facilitate the planning process with the former administration and with the leadership team you're going to hear from tonight. We'll maybe get to hear from him a little bit later, but we're thrilled that he's going to be able to see this process all the way through, and absolutely hopeful that he'll be joining us as we embark on the planning for our next five-year strategic plan. So as we go forward, let's just take a look. These are our strategic plan values. And honestly, a strategic plan is only as strong as the values that underlie. So the mission and vision guide it, and we'll talk about that in a second, but the values that were identified to be most important to the district and to the community while we were looking ahead, were being able to create challenges that foster curiosity, growth, and confidence, to inspire integrity, in-person action and process, to facilitate safe inspirational communities, to be able to develop respectful, supportive, resourceful, and independent citizens, and to be able to develop persistent, collaborative, and open communicators. So those values really helped us to formulate what it was that we were going to put together, what actions we needed to do over the following five years. The district mission statement, and the strategic plan mission statement, if you can just go to the next slide, you see it posted everywhere. It's even on our agenda. It's on the district website. I think we've absolutely tried to institutionalize it, but again, it requires us to keep our focus on the students. And when you look at the key words, the underlying words that we have there, empower, competent, self-directed, those are the things that guide our work every day, but also what we've kept in mind as the strategic plan has rolled out. And finally, what you'll see, for me, is the vision statement for the strategic plan. And the vision statement is what guides the work over the five years. And I think as you listen tonight, you're going to find that I found that the vision has really been adopted, not only by each of the action teams you're going to hear from tonight, but by all of us, including our Board of Education. And all of our efforts continue really to raise the bar and to create opportunities for all of the students in Nutley. At this time, I want to be able to introduce Ken Beanyah. He's our current Director of Curriculum, Instruction, and Assessment, grades six to twelve. I think he started in a different role during the strategic plan, but he's going to talk to us a little bit about the makeup of our action teams and introduce the components of the plan. So thanks, Ken.
Thank you, guys. Pleased to be here. Just want to thank the board and especially Dr. Librera for setting us off five years ago on a great journey, actually. It seems like a very long time ago. I remember sitting in a crowd, and there was members in the community and members from the school, and most administrators were there, and Cheryl, you were there, a lot of people were there. And I remember him going around the room saying, "Why do you want to be here right now?" And a lot of the answers came back. My answer was to be a part of something from the bottom up, to build something. Over the past couple of years, I think we have built something through the work of six action teams. I think it's been great, and it goes to this vision statement. So this district really took this vision and worked with it. And if you can go one slide ahead, Ian. We did so in the manner of six action teams, opening with letters C. We took that vision, and we parceled the different parts of that vision out to Character Communication, Community Confidence, Configuration, Curriculum. I was in a different role at that time, and I was part of the Configuration Committee. And there was a lot going on in the Configuration Committee, and I'm sure Trace is going to speak to that. But these action teams took initiative to use the strengths of several administrators, along with the strengths of our teachers and faculty and community members, communicating with the board, to move an agenda forward. And that agenda, after five years, is a strong move towards best practice, research-based initiatives. I mean, I think we all learned a tremendous amount by going through the process, and couldn't be happier with many of the things we achieved. So I just wanted to come up and just talk about the way we're structured. And we were structured into six action teams, led by three to four administrators, working with the whole community, driving forward an agenda towards best practice. And the first action team I'd like to bring up is the Character Committee. Mr. Jones, Ms. Riddell.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to present our work so far. There always seems to be work left to do in our action teams, and as we continue to revise and refine our work, we keep extending and stretching. The overarching goal of the Character Team, and then Nutley Public Schools, was to identify and integrate opportunities throughout the school community that empower students to be creative, competent, passionate, self-directed citizens who are actively involved and contribute to our school community and to our local society. The purpose was identified five years ago, and our goal at the end of 2017 is listed in front of you here, that the students would assume that responsibility for integrity of the Nutley student population, and the students would be responsible, demonstrating character by their actions in school and in the community, and through their own participation evaluating what they were able to do. The next slide lists our celebrated work in the last four years. As you can see, we went from researching and creating a document to finalizing that draft, and looking at all of the available research that we could implement. In year three, staff development and targeted pilot implementation in certain areas that were selected to see how we could best move forward. One of the most important and valuable things was how we infused social-emotional learning. Dr. Riley was unable to be here this evening, but his doctorate is in that area, and he brought a lot to the table, and we were able to infuse those elements into our benchmarks that we created in that second year. Obviously, professional development course offerings for the staff was vital for our implementation in year three, and then in year four, extending that to counselors, HIV, and training for coaches at the Coaches Academy. Next slide. Year five, some of the work that we can highlight now, the request for pilot programming. We looked at a variety of outside programs that we might be able to use to improve our implementation. Implementing of the coaches and school counselors, selected feedback from the staff that attended our professional development coursework, and also HIV monitoring. And we were looking, or began to say, is there any correlation between HIV reporting and some of those things, and how we're infusing character? We don't have that information, and we're not sure if we can even isolate or find that information to say that there is a correlation, but we're going to be looking at that. And then moving forward now, and looking forward, continued training should include instructional strategies that will incorporate the benchmarks into all areas of our professional practice, and pairing with other teams, or refining other teams and combining those teams to find additional implementation possibilities. And I'd like to introduce the Communications Team.
Thank you so much, David. Hi, I'm Karen Greco, Director of Communications. Dennis Williams, you all know, Principal of the High School, and also on the Communications Team. Helen Doig Moreno, Director of Student Services, and Andrew Vane, Head of Our Technology.
Up here, you'll see the purpose of the action team. By June 2017, the district will have a place of detailed, efficient, and technology-based system of communication that allows for multiple avenues of information and the involvement of all stakeholders in ensuring and measuring student success. Mr. Williams will walk me through kind of where we were five years ago, and how far we've moved on.
Five years ago, six years ago, the Nutley Schools District was pretty much in the Stone Age of Communication. I say that respectfully. We definitely moved on. I put the first one up, the row of phone for attendance at Nutley High School. You had to keep going through the high school. Suddenly, you receive phone calls from an automated system that kind of got the ball rolling for us internally. So when you're talking about communication, it's internal and external. We started out, year one, with the survey creation, looking at what people were asking for in terms of how they want information, what type of information, what is the methodology of receiving information. On the internal side of things, we did a best practice study of student information systems. We went to a variety of different school districts, using a whole host of them. We settled on real time. That kind of led to the integration of the parent portal and the open grade book by years two and three. One of the things that we did with the Communication Team was to get out for certain demographics and certain topics in Nutley Parent Academies, and that proved to be useful when we were implementing changes, for instance, to the grading system. That was a huge one back about four years ago. That was very well-intended. School Messenger, that's a K through twelve initiative to get information out, you know, in terms of school closings and all the vital information services you need, but also to kind of get people up and running on other things via email. We can kind of jump down to the newsletters at the elementarys. We realized how to get elementarys. There's a lot of paper going home. Historically, it's always been the case, sometimes it doesn't get home. So we tried to get that going. This was really based on some really positive feedback from elementary-level parents. But again, getting parents in contact, get their contact information, and creating tutorials on the web for parents, developing Twitter handles. So I now have a Twitter now. I'm not quite sure it's working, but. Website notification system and the district calendar, the ideas, you know, there's many different methodologies and modalities for you to get information. And we will continue to keep on changing and leveraging that change to get the most efficient information out at any one time.
And as you all know, I joined the district in October, so at the very end of this five-year plan, but I can walk you through a couple of major initiatives that took place during the sixteen-seventeen school year. The first three, I'll kind of look together. The continuation of consistent information. A lot of that has been streamlined through the central office, and I think it's made the message the same in each of our buildings, district-wide. I was hired again late August. I started in October of sixteen. And while the district was involved in social media, we had a Facebook page, we had a Twitter page. I do think we're using them a bit more. We're posting three to five days a week, sometimes multiple times per day. Same thing with Twitter. A lot of the information's the same, but just a different demographic. There's a different demographic of people who use Facebook and Twitter, and I think it's helping to get our website message across as well. Again, the website is always the same information as the two social media channels, but kind of a different user, right? A lot of people come to our website for information, and then there's kind of a segment of moms that are really active on Facebook, and kind of some of our younger parents and even students are following us on Twitter. I started the weekend review when I came here. I've been sending that out every Friday during the school year to all staff, board of education members, commissioners. And then I sorted a key communicators list for the town of Nutley. A lot of those names I got from people, interested citizens who are coming out to the board meetings each month. Also collected those details at the town hall meeting, focus groups that we've done throughout the years. As you all know, we are faced with space issues within the district, and we have town meetings to address that. We have six town hall meetings on that topic. We have focus groups for various topics in the district. One, as recent as June, to look for details about our extended day program. We did a survey to gather community feedback, again, tied to the space issues within the school. And a big issue that's happening in September at the high school is the rotating drop schedule. We have parent academies to talk about that. That would be year five, Parent Academy exploration. Let's bring up the Community Action Team.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome. So our strategic group, we were focused on the Community Action Team. That was our title. And one of the purposes, one of the things that we had struggled with this, is how were we going to make this meaningful to students? So way back when, with Dr. Librera, when this really was in the beginning stages, is we wanted to affect students, affect students in such a way that we're going to promote learning, and promote it in a way that they can connect to it, not try to move it outside the classroom, and really give them an opportunity to do something with their learning. So with that mindset, came this. "By September 2017, all students will participate and present the learning derived from curriculum-based, service-oriented projects that instill competence, responsibility, and produce measurable contributions to the community." So from there, we tried to chunk our time in such a way that we could feel like every year, we were making some sort of progress, and at the beginning, it really was a big lift, because we were struggling with a framework. And we wanted to be able to hand our teachers a tool to say, "If you follow these steps at the beginning, this will give you a springboard into a great learning project for kids." And the framework itself provided direction. So that took a bunch of research, and we actually pulled from a number of districts around the country to create a framework that would be meaningful. So year one, research and create draft framework. Year two, finalize draft and research how we can best implement it. Year three, staff development and targeted pilot implementation. And that happened in a variety of buildings, simple projects, and what we learned is that a lot of these things were already happening, and we simply had to give our initiative some words, and change a little bit of what they were doing to fall within our framework. Year four, infusing to academic and non-academic curriculum. There are so many projects that have fallen within this framework over the course of the last five years. Really, just a few examples. First grade Yanacor actually, Radcliffe as well, they did a boot camp through the Patriot Project. Radcliffe did a little bit different. Third grade, Radcliffe School did book exchange. Every student in the school received a book on the holidays from other people within the building. Fourth grade, Zumo the Rabbit. If anyone had an opportunity to come to our spring musical, that was part of the theme. So again, that's a class, that was an initiative that started in a social studies class, which ended up being addressed inside of media, turned into a music program, and then was presented. Fifth grade capstone projects. I was reading actually today, because this is the timeline, I actually start getting caught up off things, a number of fifth graders shared with me their capstone projects that they had done throughout the course of the year. And actually, a number of them must have been inspired from the Zumo the Rabbit, because the ones that I was reading had to do with starvation in Africa and the lack of sanitary conditions in certain countries, and the impact. And another impact was on overpopulization in certain regions of the world, and why certain countries enacted the one child per family law, and now they've actually changed it to the two. So these are all the things that are coming from the kids. Yanacor School, Be Awesome to Somebody, that's a charitable movement that came out of guidance. Sixth grade Lincoln and fifth grade school, a joint service project benefiting Nutley Family Service Bureau and St. John's Soup Kitchen. Again, that's something that's been going on before some of our projects started, but now utilizing our framework, the students have an opportunity to reflect and connect it to actual classroom learning. So that's the real biggest change, is the students are bridging what they're doing outside the classroom with an academic component and reflecting on it, and then sharing that out. And then Mrs. Voor is going to talk about some of the examples from seven as well.
So I came in pretty late in game two. I was hired out a year and a half ago. Some of the feedback we received last year regarding this committee was that there wasn't enough involvement. So our goal for year five was to have every grade level participate in some type of community service learning project. Mike described some examples that were going on in the elementary school. At the middle school, we did a digital citizen project. If you're not familiar with the framework, it's really about identifying some type of issue or problem that's occurring within society. It could be on a local, a national, a global level, and then researching how to come up with strategies to solve these problems. And then the students actually were implementing these strategies to find some type of resolution. You know, the digital citizen project was so relevant to our students, especially when we discuss HIV, because it impacts them on a daily basis, and what does that mean to be a responsible digital citizen? And we're giving them strategies on how to not only communicate with each other and describe conflict resolution, but also what a digital citizen actually looks like, how it's going to impact their future, and, you know, what strategies they use, and then teach their friends how to become a responsible digital citizen. The NHS radio/TV production, they did distracted driving. It was kind of like a mannequin challenge. They researched all of the issues that teenagers are specifically having because they are distracted driving because of social media, and what the results are when they end up in accidents.
This was really based on some really positive feedback from elementary level parents. But again, getting parents' contact, get their contact information and system, I created tutorials on the web for parents, developing Twitter handles. So I know I have a Twitter now, I'm not quite sure it's working, but website notification system and the district calendar, the ideas, you know, there's many different methodologies and modalities for you to get information. And we will continue to keep on changing and leveraging that change to get the most efficient information out at any one time.
And as you all know, I joined the district in October, so at the very end of this five-year plan, but I can walk you through a couple of major initiatives that took place during the sixteen, seventeen school year. The first three, I'll kind of look together, the continuation of consistent information. A lot of that has been streamlined through the central office and I think it's made the message is the same in each of our buildings district-wide. I was hired again late August, I started in October of sixteen. And while we did, while the district was involved in social media, we had a Facebook page, we had a Twitter page. I do think we're using them a bit more. We're posting three to five days a week, sometimes multiple times a day. Same thing with Twitter, a lot of the information's the same, but just a different demographics, different, there's a different demographic of people who use Facebook and Twitter and I think it's helping to get our website message across as well. Again, the website is always the same information as the two social media channels, but kind of a different user, right? A lot of people come to our website for information and then there's kind of a segment of moms that are really active on Facebook and kind of some of our younger, younger parents and even students are following us on Twitter. I started the Week in Review when I came here. I've been sending that out every Friday during the school year to all staff, board of education members, commissioners. And then I sorted a key communicators list for the town of Nutley. A lot of those names I got from people, interested citizens who are coming out to the board meetings each month. Also collected those details at the town hall meeting, focus groups that we've done throughout the years. As you all know, we are faced with space issues within the district and we have town meetings to address that. We have six town hall meetings on that topic. We have focus groups for various topics in the district. One, as recent as June, to look for details about our extended day program. We did a survey to gather community feedback, again tied to the space issues within the school. And a big initiative that's happening in September at the high school is the rotating drop schedule. We have parent academies to talk about that. That would be Year Five Parent Academy Exploration. Let's bring up the Community Action Team.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome. So our strategic group, we were focused on the Community, the Community Action Team, that was our title. And one of the purposes, one of the things that we had struggled with this is how are we going to make this meaningful to students? So way back when with Dr. Rivera, when this really was in the beginning stages, is we wanted to affect students, affect students in such a way that we're going to promote learning and promote it in a way that they can connect to it, not try to move it outside the classroom and really give them an opportunity to do something with their learning. So with that mindset came this. "By September 2017, all students will participate and present the learning derived from curriculum-based, service-oriented projects that instill confidence, responsibility, and produce measurable contributions to the community." So from there, we, we tried to chunk our time in such a way that we could feel like every year we were making some sort of progress. And at the beginning, it really was a big lift because we were struggling with a framework. And we wanted to be able to hand our teachers a tool to say, if you follow these steps at the beginning, this will give you a springboard into a great learning project for kids. And in the framework itself provided direction. So that took a bunch of research and we actually pulled from a number of districts around the country to create a framework that would be meaningful. So Year One, Research and Create Draft Framework. Year Two, Finalize Draft and Research How We Can Best Implement It. Year Three, Staff Development and Targeted Pilot Implementation. And that happened in a variety of buildings, simple projects. And what we learned is that a lot of these things were already happening. And we simply had to give our initiatives some words and change a little bit of what they were doing to follow within our framework. Year Four, Infusion to Academic and Non-Academic Curriculum. There are so many projects that, that have fallen within this framework over the course of the last five years. Really just a few examples. First grade Yanacor actually, Radcliffe as well, they did a boot camp through the Patriot Project. Radcliffe did a little bit different. Third grade Radcliffe School did book exchange. Every student in the school received a book on the holidays from other people within the building. Fourth grade, Zumo the Rabbit. If anyone had an opportunity to come to our spring musical, that was part of the theme. So again, that's a class, that was an initiative that started in a social studies class, which ended up being addressed inside of media, turned into a music program, and then was presented. Fifth grade capstone projects. I was reading actually today, because this is the timeline, I actually start getting caught up off limits. A number of fifth graders shared with me their capstone projects that they had done throughout the course of the year. And actually, a number of them must have been inspired from the Zumo the Rabbit because the ones that I was reading, the, had to do with starvation in Africa and the lack of sanitary conditions in certain countries. And the impact, another impact was on overpopulation in certain regions of the world and why certain countries enacted the one child per family law. And now they've actually changed it to the two. So these, these are all the things that are coming from the kids. Yanacor School, Be Awesome to Somebody, that's a charitable movement that came out of guidance. Sixth grade Lincoln and fifth grade school, a joint service project benefiting Nutley Family Service Bureau and St. John's Soup Kitchen. Again, that's something that's been going on for, before some of our projects started. But now utilizing our framework, the students have an opportunity to reflect and connect it to actual classroom learning. So that's the real biggest change, is the students are bridging what they're doing outside the classroom with an academic component and reflecting on it and then sharing that out. And then Mrs. Gabor is going to talk about some examples from September as well.
So I came in pretty late in game two. I was hired out a year and a half ago. Some of the feedback we received last year regarding this committee was that there wasn't enough involvement. So our goal for Year Five was to have every grade level participate in some type of community service learning project. You know, Mike described some examples that were going on in the elementary school. At the middle school, we did a digital citizen project. If you're not familiar with the framework, it's really about identifying some type of issue or problem that's occurring within society. It could be on a local, a national, a global level, and then researching how to come up with strategies to solve these problems. And then the students actually were implementing these strategies to find some type of resolution. You know, the digital citizen project was, is so relevant to our students, especially when we discuss HIG because it impacts them on a daily basis. And what does that mean to be a responsible digital citizen? And we're giving them strategies on how to not only communicate with each other and describe conflict resolution, but also what a digital citizen actually looks like, how it's going to impact their future, and you know, what strategies they use and then teach their friends how to become a responsible digital citizen. The NHS Radio TV production, they did distracted driving. It was kind of like a mannequin challenge. They researched all of the, the issues that teenagers are specifically having because they are distracted driving because of social media and what the results are when they end up in accidents. So you know, although it was like a fun thing that we actually see on our website, I feel like the kids really learned a lot because they pledged, you know, from that moment on that they were going to pay attention while they were driving and hopefully lessen these types of incidences. The Women's Activism Club held a wonderful panel. They invited local women from the Nutley's community to come and speak about kind of breaking barriers and what it means to be, you know, a woman who's an innovator. And how do you overcome certain challenges that young women face when they're entering in a certain type of careers that are dominated by men? And you know, what strategies that they have to use in order to break those barriers? And it was a wonderful evening if you were there to participate. The social studies department really took advantage of this framework. They focused on many different issues that, you know, they had to research and then like once again, share with their students or fellow students on how to implement new strategies to deal with mental health, animal rights, environmental protection, cancer research, and the Special Olympics. Now, the NHS Blood Drive is something that's been going on for years, but we tweaked it this year to kind of fit it within our framework. The kids did have the presentation that they always have from the New York Blood Drive Association to talk about the need for people to donate blood. But once the kids actually donated blood, they were required, they're always required to sit there and kind of make sure that they're okay, get their, you know, have a snack and a drink. There was a reflection sheet for them to, to fill out. Like, why did you participate? What is the need? And how will you make sure that this continues to happen, not only within the school community, but within your, the Nutley community and your lives? So that was how we, you know, tried to implement it into the framework. And then our social studies department actually participated. We had a group of students go to TNEC High School. They discussed different issues that we were having with race in America. They were able to work and collaborate with many different high schools within the county and discuss basically how, you know, what's going on and then what did they need to do as this young generation to overcome the challenges that we still face even in 2017 with different wrong racial issues. So once again, this was just several examples we wanted to share with you. We, we met our goal of having every single grade level be in some type of service learning project. And we hope that we can kind of use this as a springboard to continue getting the students to really initiate these types of projects. Because like Mike said, it's, it really should be student-driven. Although the, the teachers and the staff, the facilitators, we'd like to get the students more involved in facilitating and then implementing the research and, you know, teaching each other. Pretty much where we are. Okay, I'd like to have the competency action team come up.
So in case you aren't sure, this is my partner. He's the principal at Radcliffe School, Ms. Gabor is one of our vice principals at the high school. Who else was on the community?
Jill Zellman.
Jill Zellman, yeah.
She's on.
Sorry.
Oh, apologize.
It's fine.
Jack, I'm going to make sure.
Okay, we present to you the Competency Action Team. If you're wondering what a competency is, it is, competencies are 21st century skills that make successful people successful. So we want our students to hold these competencies so that they can be successful. Our five-year goal was students at all grade levels will demonstrate mastery of core competencies in content performance on conference sessions, personal learning experiences, and presentations of personal growth to a variety of audiences. Okay, so this is just the first four years in a nutshell. I'm sure we've shared this before in past years. We developed the framework to be similar to our Danielson framework. We developed descriptions, components, and identifiers for five competencies. We had six, but then we narrowed it down to five and they were collaboration, communication, research, problem solving, and self-awareness and direction. All things, all skills that we want our students to leave us with. And the research is really important because that's about all the online activity. Year, so that's Years One and Two. We developed the framework, we got feedback from staff, and we kind of, you know, planned the pilot. Year Three, we piloted in the Phys Education and Health Department first, through all of our physical programs, K to 12. And then we began cross-curricular implementation. By every time a new content area was in program review and was working on the curriculum document, we had a competency component added in the curriculum document so that we could, you know, infuse it throughout. Year Four, we continued the implementation and our goal was to really reach every student, at least within the Physical Education and Health Department, because that's a commonality for all students. We also implemented it through our elementary school standard-based report card by using it to evaluate students' social emotional growth. It was also in Year Four last year implemented to assess students in the internship program at the high school. So our final year, we have full implementation of the framework. All teachers are aware of it, but we tried to emphasize this year, student use of the language. We refined the rubrics and the standards on the elementary school report cards. We had, we used the five competencies to assess that, but we had different rubrics for K to three and then for four to six. And again, we use competency frameworks to assess a number of district programs. I just listed a few examples. We had Project Brandtshire in Physical Education, the internship program at the high school, leadership interviews and presentations through, through, in the health program, and our middle school advisory program. Moving forward, just so I'm thinking ahead, I would like to work with character and combine competency and character to really develop and revise the social emotional component on the elementary school report card. I think it still needs work, and I think competency and character need to combine. That's it. Introducing the configuration.
Thank you. And so you have speaking is McCann Martin, our coordinator of math, right behind her. Yes, Robyn Powell, coordinator of health and PEE, principal of Lincoln School, they're in the staff, principal of Yanacor School, Princess Janssens. Thanks you guys.
I'm Tracy Egan, principal of Walker Real School. Super supervisor of special services.
I'm the judge and district coordinator of science. As the configuration action team, the purpose of our committee was to look at our, our district as a district. Five years ago, we had seven different buildings working in isolation. It's like seven different islands. And the purpose of our committee was to align our district K to 12. So one of the first things we did was we started researching what other districts do and best practices. And one of the things, not that I'm biased at all, but we started with the middle school. So one of the things we did was we looked at how we were operating. And although we were called a middle school, we were really operating as a junior high school. And we, what we did research on was the middle school model. We did a lot of research that year. We had committees, they went out and visited other middle, true middle schools, and came back to our school. And we made recommendations to the superintendent and the board. And we moved from a junior high school into a middle school model. We spent a year training staff, educating the community, getting buy-in from students and teachers. And the transition was so smooth that we used that model again in the following year to look at the high school. We started researching different scheduling options for the high school. And the high school, what we decided was best for the high school was the rotating drop block schedule. So this year, past year, we spent, again, sending teachers out to see what that looks like in other schools. We had other schools come in and meet with our teachers. We piloted it this year. We had parent academies on the scheduling to inform them and educate them on the rotating drop block. And then in September, we'll be moving into that. We also took advantage of professional development that we had this year. And seventh and eighth grade teachers met with sixth grade teachers to start moving from the elementary mindset into a middle school mindset for sixth grade because it's really a middle-level education.
Oh, that's the case, sorry. There you go. And now curriculum is up next.
Thanks, you guys.
Use the clicker.
Oh, sorry. Thanks.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Joe Matari. I'm one of the high school vice principals. Laura Gavardia and Mike Solomon were unable to make it this evening, so I'll be speaking on their behalf. Over the past five years, the Curriculum Action Team has worked with Board of Education, Central Office, the administrative team and teachers, in order to create processes and procedures that make sure that our programs are relevant for our students, that are substantiated by the latest educational research. They also ensure, these processes also ensure that our programs are current and follow the standards that are prescribed by the state of New Jersey, and that they also meet the needs of our students as well as meet the needs of our five-year curriculum cycle. In Year One, the Curriculum Action Team spent majority of the year creating a program review process. The program review is a process that asks every K-12 department led by one lead administrator as well as committee of teachers assembled by that administrator to assess the program, the curriculum, the professional development by looking at student achievement. When we looked at our vision, we talked about student data. We used student data in order to identify areas in which growth needed to occur, and then made decisions in order to improve. Okay, at the end of the program review process, that administrator, with the guidance of Central Office as well as the committee, made recommendations in the areas of curriculum, which spurred curriculum revisions, professional development, resources to support that curriculum, as well as increased or revised staffing needs. In Year Two, our, our Curriculum Action Team took a two-pronged approach. We were creating processes, but we also needed to support departments that were implementing the processes that were created in the year prior. In Year Two, we supported the K-12 departments that were instituting the program review process, as well as took the, the resource piloting process that was completed by the math department in the 2012-13 school year, and created a manual for subsequent departments to implement so that that curricula could be supported appropriately. In Year Three, the K-12 departments that were implementing the program review as well as the piloting process were continued to be supported by our committee as well as Central Office. As well, we created a curriculum mapping process, which allowed departments to unpack the curricula that were now in the second year of implementation and were no longer a draft. And that, Year Three, in fact, the competency committee also mentioned it. We worked with the competency committee in order to make sure that the framework was used in order to identify evidence of learning within the curriculum writing process. In Year Four, we supported K-12 departments once again in all of the things that were created, in all the processes that were created by our, our, our action team in order to ensure that our students continue to learn effectively and successfully. We created a parent curriculum overview template in order to inform parents of those documents and so that parents can ask better questions when having conversations with teachers as well as their students. And then finally, at the end of Year Four, which carried into last year, Year Five, we worked with Central Office to create a Cycle Two Program Review, which increased focus and operated under the umbrella of fidelity. When we think of fidelity, we ask ourselves the questions, did we achieve everything that we worked toward achieving? It's still a program review, except now there are two components. There's an external program review process where somebody from the outside comes in via request, proposal and all, and all those steps, and comes in and asks, helps us answer the following questions. What have we done well? What still needs work? And are there any other areas that we did not address in the past five years? Once the recommendations are made from the external reviewer, we take that information and we then conduct our internal review, which is our original program review process, at which point more recommendations are made in order to continue addressing student achievement. I'm happy to say that at the end, as, as our five-year strategic plan sunsets, every K-12 department in the Nutley Public Schools has completed all the processes and procedures that were outlined in this presentation. In order to further support the work of the curriculum committee, as well as continue supporting the students of Nutley Public Schools, Central Office is also reorganized. We now have two directors of curriculum instruction to increase specificity as well as support as these processes are implemented. Just some examples, screen casts were created by our directors in order to help train teachers on how to write curriculum more effectively and more efficiently. Access to training was more effective. You not only, you don't always have to contact the administrator for help. You can, there are resources that are available for you. There was an increased focus on backwards design, which once again puts student assessment and the measurement of learning at the forefront of identifying areas for growth. And finally, there was an increased, increased funding for curriculum writing. As we look toward the future, I think the Nutley Public Schools has made quite a bit of a commitment to curriculum, and we're looking to see how the Cycle Two Program Review continues to support student learning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matari. Can you just go to the next one before you go? Because I was going to say, I think it's me again. Before, no, that's it. I get this in. But before I thank you all and try and synthesize this, because we do have Dr. Rivera in the house, is there anything that you want to say after you've listened to the culmination of five years of planning and subsequent work?
Just a few things. First, I would like to congratulate the people who presented tonight and all the other folks who worked with them, because I know they were not the only ones to do that work. Strategic plans generally are dust collectors in a lot of histories. And that happens because there is good intent, but not clear focus on what matters most. And the work that was done in the beginning was really very important. And I remember very, all conversations I had with you about, so the core is going to be, and the core was, and you heard it over and over through the people who talked tonight, about there'll be plenty of things that adults will be thinking about, but all of it goes to how is going, how it will affect students in the positive ways of the things that were identified. So I am not going to take credit for the focus and target of that. I think there were plenty of people who did that. What I did and was delighted to do was to take that focus and just keep asking questions. And that's what we did in that spring period. Because that set the table for the fine work that they've done. And they should be congratulated. And we also know that that is the beginning of the next chapter on so much of this. But it also will generate a lot of ideas, the likes of what we heard. And I've been working with the Nutley community for six years, and every year it gets better, it gets more interesting, it gets more positive because of the way it's organized and the insistence on this is who we are and this is what we're going to do. Congratulations to all of you. Congratulations to the district as well. It is another great accomplishment for Nutley. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll look forward to having you ask us lots more questions when we start to talk about the next five years. I also want to echo my thanks for everyone that's here tonight, for those who participated and couldn't be here to join us tonight. As you heard, and as Dr. Rivera just said, this, the work that's been done over the last five years has been tremendous. This leadership team and this board, this community have really demonstrated their commitment to excellence for each of our students in Nutley and in each school. I think, you know, when I came a year ago, what resonated with me was that we're not seven different buildings, that we are a township of Nutley, a community of people committed to all of our students pre-K to 12. And I have to say, just because our five-year timelines come to an end, our work is not. The power of strategic planning and the subsequent work that comes from it is because of the ongoing reflection and revision and hopefully the questions that we'll continue to ask. And at this time, while we're beginning to look at the next five years, we, we know that we have, we now have the data to see where we were. You've heard tonight a little bit about how we've gotten. about how we've gotten to where we are today. And now, we need to go back and assess what those current needs are and see how we're going to realign action teams, how we're going to realign some of our focus and set some new goals for our next five years, not just again for our leadership team and our board and for me, but for the whole community. We truly, the same way we've said to you through our town hall meetings, through our Karen academies with our one-to-one initiatives or the rotating schedule, we really do value and need your involvement. So as we come to this next phase of planning, we hope that you'll join us again in being part of this process. So thank you. Thank you to everybody for being here tonight and for all of your work, not just tonight, but of course over all the years. Thank you. So hello again. Good evening again. I hope everybody's having a chance to enjoy some summer. I know I am and I'm loving everyone who knows it. So again, thank you for joining us tonight because it's not much of a summertime activity. I will say that it has been incredibly busy in the district since the school year ended and the summer programs began. In addition to our extended school year programs and the strategies programs at the elementary and middle school levels, we've had a lot of fun every day between rocket launches and plays and a ton of other great things in our Let's Learn program that just ended on Friday. And in our extended day summer program that's going to be continuing through August, each of the programs requires, again, a tremendous amount of planning, the diligence of many, many teachers and other staff and volunteers, and it's truly an exceptional offering for Nutley students and something really unique that this community provides. Since I see Chris standing patiently by in the corner, did you want to say a couple things about Let's Learn while you're there?
Sure. Of course. So we had about 241 students this year at Let's Learn. It's a pretty big number. And 22 classes of students. And Mr. Vania and Mrs. Johnson, science is the top, top one, followed by Mr. Levine, the engineering and coding classes. And then the next one was cooking. So I asked this student, is it that you like to cook or you like to eat? He liked to eat. So that was the whole cooking thing. But it starts out the whole program with you all, the board, approving that the program goes on in the... For the summer. And Dr. Glazer, thank you very much. Mrs. James, thank you very much. And Mr. Nicolet, thank you very much. Because without your support and your help, and Mr. Nicolet's, all his men, that helped me move in, move out, and worked around me. Mr. Williams, I said the other day to him that I always do pick the high school to be in because it just fits the program with the three cooking classes actually being used. And I know what that means to that building because there's projects that have to get done. There was a ramp that had to be fixed and it takes 28 days for the concrete to cure it, and yet I'm there. So I appreciate all of that very much because it makes the program run smoother. And Mr. Vemeister and the tech team helping me with the technology too. So the program is great. It's very close to my heart, and I enjoy it every year, but it's all because of all you people who help me out. Mr. Matera, thanks. Thank you.
Oh, no, thank you, Chris. You do a tremendous job and it really, you can see it in every kid's eyes. They just love being part of it. So thank you. Additionally, we're planning for the new school year. It's not just the summer. We're already planning for next year. And as you know and as you've heard again tonight, one of our upcoming initiatives at the high school is the new drop schedule. In that structure, there will be a coming lunch hour with a variety of 20-minute opportunities. So in preparation for that, we'll be holding our third meeting for our area merchants, restaurant owners and their personnel on Thursday, August 10th, from 2:30 to 3:30 at Nutley High School. Depending on our SVPs, we'll either be in the principal's conference room or in the auditorium, yet our community members. And we're really going to discuss best practices and the structure and share what we've learned from our pilot and from our neighboring districts. I do really ask you to please our SVP to Karen Greco by August 7th so we do know what space we're going to be in. I'm also proud to share with you that our jazz band is going to be performing at the opening reception of the Learning Forward Conference in Princeton on Thursday, August 3rd, and on Friday, August 4th. Three of our students are going to be sharing their original presentations at the conference. Two of those were part of Capstone Projects that happened at the end of last year. Our students, Aliana Magalaya Quai from the middle school, a seventh grader, is going to be doing an inspiration presentation on gender equality. Molly Morris, also a seventh grader from the middle school, is going to be doing a presentation on teaching young students about health and fitness. And finally, Caterina Robles, our student board representative and Nutley High School grad, is going to be doing a presentation on chasing experiences, not titles. I think that's going to be really interesting. I want to thank my co-presenter for that conference, Mary Ann Woods-Burfey, not only for organizing the students but for recognizing their projects as she's been working throughout the district. I will say that we invited Mary Ann. She's had a busy summer. She was representing the National Education Association in China earlier in the summer. And last week, she was at the U.S. Department of Education. So we miss her tonight, but we're proud that she's part of our Nutley team. And we're certainly proud of all of our students who are representing us both inside and outside the community.
Thank you, Dr. Glazer. We're going to move on over to our board administrator, Mrs. Karen James, for secretary of record.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. I hope everyone is enjoying their summer. For those of us in Central Office, particularly in the business office, the time is just flying way too fast. We try and stop and catch our breath every day, but it just seems like the work just keeps snowballing. But things are moving along. In addition to all the work that is being done by our own buildings and grounds and maintenance department, there's a lot of work that's been happening at the high school, refurbishment of the guidance area and the special services area, working on floor improvements throughout the district, improving the boys' locker rooms at the high school. There is work going on at Spring Garden, where, bless me, a lot of new planting went in to Spring Garden to beautify the grounds. And we are going to be replacing the main entrance steps at Lincoln School in August. And there is also a resolution on tonight's agenda to approve the replacement of some of the auditorium flooring in that, at Lincoln School as well because it is becoming a safety hazard. In addition to that, our auditors showed up today to begin their audit process. So they will be with us for the rest of this week and then coming back in sometime September or in October to finish up all of that work. So as I said, things just keep rolling forward. Mr. Kelly's TV media production students were awarded first prize earlier this year, and the prize was a simulator. So we're expecting delivery of that simulator on August the 8th. Also, the on tonight's agenda is the approval of two federal grants, the first being the Carl Perkins Grant, which is funds that we use to support our culinary arts, digital photography and Cisco classes, as well as the ESSA Grant, which formerly was called No Child Left Behind. So very shortly, both Mr. Vania and Mrs. Locasola and Mr. Memoria are attending some training, and they will be diving into getting that application finalized and submitted before the summer, August 30th, right? In addition, on tonight's agenda, there are a lot of budget transfers which help to finalize our financial reports for June 30th. And we're also going to be approving the preliminary board secretary and treasurer's report for June so that we are in compliance with the state standard of having those reports approved within 30 days of the end of the school year. In the meantime, we're still working on finalizing things, so they will be revised again next month. And we're also announcing that the additional state aid that was distributed to districts throughout the state, we received $142,157. And we are required to approve a resolution this evening showing where those funds are being dispersed in the budget for 1718. So we welcome those funds because, as usual, they will help to support some of the budget cuts that we had to make and help us to enhance programs and software that we can make available to our students. Thank you.
Hey, there's something really, really exciting in the business office that you didn't talk about, at least conspicuously absent. Oh, yes, we're very pleased to announce that we have a new baby. Well, not all of us, but Mr. Memora. We're all adopting her because she's absolutely beautiful, but Mr. Memora and his wife had a beautiful baby girl yesterday on his birthday, so he was very, very happy about that. So we welcome Giada Danielle Memora.
Thank you, Ms. James. All right, so we're going to go to our committee reports. Minister Valzamal, with our academic report.
Thank you, Mr. President. The academic committee met on July 12. Dr. Glazer reviewed a sidebar agreement with the Educational Association to redistribute one of the contractual robotic stipends to the special ed department for a stipend to support programming for students in the community. This agreement is on the agenda of approval tonight. Dr. Glazer reviewed the proposal the board received for staff member to collect data in support of her graduate research project. It's also on the agenda for tonight. Dr. Glazer provided an update on the principal evaluation pilot that the district has been participating in this year and will continue into year two. That is also on tonight's agenda. Dr. Glazer reviewed requests received from the Carney Board of Ed participating in renovations to the crew house that Nutley, Belvo and Carney use. There is a question involved that is not budgeted, and the committee has asked a number of questions at the Carney that need to be answered prior to the request being considered. And Mr. Vania and Mrs. Locasola reviewed the field trip for professional learning requests are also on tonight's agenda. And finally, Dr. Glazer approved, provided updates on legal personnel issues.
Thank you, Mr. Valzamal. We're going to move over to finance, and we'll have Mr. Farah, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. The finance committee met on July 18th. The committee reviewed tonight's financial agenda resolutions. Mrs. James and Mr. Memora discussed the year-end transfers. The committee reviewed the renewal for several contracts for software, support and services for both instructional programs and back office equipment. We also discussed donations from PTOs, booster clubs and individuals. The committee discussed a preliminary review by the Department of Education of the referendum projects, the request from the Carney Board of Education for financial contribution towards the repair of the bulkhead in Dock. The committee also asked Mrs. James to refer this matter to our attorney for their review before any financial decisions are made. Mrs. James advised the committee of deciding made by Westbridge Academy to terminate the food service agreement with the district for the upcoming year, and this may impact our guarantees stipulated in the district's contract with Charlestown. Mrs. James provided a status on the plus five variance application, which is being reviewed and finalized by our attorney. The committee reviewed the final list of items purchased for matching funds from each of the school PTOs. The items and donations are on tonight's agenda for approval along with the final approval for the Martian van uniforms. Mr. Nicolet updated the committee on the summer work and projects currently underway throughout the district. He highlighted the status of the final high school door lock installation, the curb replacement, the removal of both carpet and floor tiles in the high school guidance suite. Installation of new tile floor will start on July 20th. He reported on the work being done in the high school boys' locker room, including new lockers, floor refurbishment and Lincoln School front steps, repairs of the high school bathrooms, boys' locker room, floor resurfacing, replacement of all fixtures and installation of new lockers in the boys' gym. Our next meeting is scheduled for August 22nd.
Thank you, Mr. Farah. We're going to go over to Ms. Sherman for policy report or policy committee report.
It was a very brief policy committee meeting because of vacations. Dr. Glazer and I just met briefly to outline the next meetings from now and the end of the year. We reviewed the updated organizational chart, which is Policy 1110 to be made available, which is on the agenda tonight. We discussed setting up policy committee meetings to meet in August, September, October and November, offering conference call options for committee members traveling. We discussed the development of a timeline for completing the policy book review, possibly by November for CUSAC review. We reviewed the Nutley Board of Education[1511.11] We reviewed the Nutley Board of Education Policy Book Index. Dr. Glazer indicated that various administrators and educators were reviewing applicable sections of the index. All the board members will review in the bylaws. They would be reporting at upcoming meetings with updates to existing policies for the board's consideration. We reviewed the bylaw section of the policy book to be reviewed with updates to be presented to the board for consideration. And we discussed agenda items for the next policy committee meeting, which would include, but are not limited to, timeline for policy committee completion of current policy book review, May two thousand seventeen mandated policies to be posted for board consideration, and non-mandated policies that the administration and the board would like the policy committee to develop and present to the board. As part of my, I guess, responsibilities as chair of the policy committee, I attended a Strauss ESME Education Policy and School Law Seminar on June second. Strauss ESME provides school districts with policy alerts and summaries on New Jersey State Board of Education mandated policies and regulations that we, as a board, review and pass throughout the year. For example, the special education policies and regulations that were passed a few months ago. Strauss ESME also works with the New Jersey State Board of Education and provides current updates on upcoming policy issues to be promulgated throughout the state. They monitor and report on arbitration decisions affecting school districts and assist the board with policy review of both mandated policies and those created by boards. At this seminar, we reviewed the May two thousand seventeen mandated policies regarding evaluation of superintendent, board of education, website accessibility, evaluation of teachers, evaluation of administrators, principals, vice principals, and assistant principals, professional development of teachers and school leaders, suspension, expulsion, district sustainability, local wellness policies, unpaid medical charges, and even bedbugs. The seminar also provided different breakout sessions. I attended the Who Gets Rice, which discussed the Kane Federation of Teachers versus more all recently decided by the New Jersey Call Division, which held the public body is now required to send a rice notice anytime employees been placed on his agenda in any matters involving the employment, appointment, termination of employment, terms and conditions of employment, evaluation of the performance, promotion, or disciplining of any specific prospective public officer or employee or current public officer employee employed or appointed by the public body. The presentation reviewed cases discussed how school boards are dealing with this decision as far as compliance with meeting agendas and noticing employees. In fact, our own board attorney, Mark Zimmer, was one of the presenters. I also attended the update on special education. On March twenty-second, two thousand seventeen, the U.S. Supreme Court in Andrew Douglas School District held to meet its substantial obligations under the American with Disabilities Act, a school district must offer an individualized program reasonably calculated to enable a child to make progress appropriate in light of the child's circumstances. Standard raises the bar regarding a school district's obligation to students with disabilities. They review the decision, its potential impact to educational programs provided to students with disabilities. And finally, I attended the Teach NJ Tenure Arbitration Cases Seminar, which, one of the services provided by Strauss ESME is their New Jersey School Digest, which has been reporting arbitration decisions since November of two thousand twelve. They didn't go over all of the cases, but they did make, did let us know they're available online to the district and presentation. They presented cases comparing and contrasting arbitrators and their decisions in areas such as inefficiency, evaluation procedures, staff attendance, and unbecoming conduct. I'd also note, this was a free seminar that's provided by Strauss ESME for up to two people in our district, and that Lindsey Council also attended from our district, and we both walked away with a lot, and I mean a lot, of good information and resources for our district. It was time well spent.
Thank you, Ms. Sherman. Okay, before we do our hearings of resolutions, from the citizens, I just wanted to make one correction. It's not actually included in our resolutions tonight, which is the sidebar agreement that was mentioned in the academic notes. The administration did not meet, just like there were open reports. That would have been reviewed at that meeting and would have been put onto our agenda. So it will be in our subsequent meeting, but I just wanted to make everyone aware of that, because it was mentioned in the academic and it's not on our resolutions for this evening. We now come to the portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board. In this section, we allow questions or comments on any of the resolutions addressed in tonight's agenda. Our Board Regulation Number six oh one allows twenty minutes for these communications. Each person shall be limited to three minutes, as we ask you to try to stay within the requirement. Speakers may speak for once, only after others have reached a speech on a topic given. All statements will be directed to me as the chairperson, and no one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to always state your name and address each and every time you address the board and sign in with Mrs. Kapuzi before you take the microphone. Will the first person that wishes to be heard please step over? Please step over. All right, seeing none. Mr. Valzamo, would you move academic resolutions, please?
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to move academic resolutions one through three.
So.
Discussion. Ms. Please roll call.
Mr. Valzamo?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
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 Ms. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Cornisella?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski, would you take administration resolutions, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I move administration resolutions one through three as so present.
Discussion. Roll call, Ms. Kaczynski.
Mr. Valzamo?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Farah?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Ms. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Cornisella?
Yes.
Mr. Farah, would you take finance resolutions, please?
Yes, Mr. President. I move finance resolutions one through three as so present.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Valzamo?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Farah?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Ms. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Cornisella?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin, you get first out, please.
Mr. President, I'd like to move all personnel resolutions to be reported.
As soon as.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Valzamo?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Farah?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Ms. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Cornisella?
Yes.
In this section, we allow questions or comments on all school-related matters. Our regulation allows thirty minutes for each communication. Again, each person shall be limited to three minutes, as we ask you to try to stay within the requirement. As I stated earlier, all statements will be directed to me as chairperson, and no one may address the board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to always state your name and address each and every time you address the board and sign in with Mrs. Kapuzi before you take the microphone. And you are there. I don't even need to ask you to step over.
I have so many. You can put this up here for very tall people. Terry Quirk, forty-five Hampton Place, spokesperson for Nutley Paranapsy Network. I have one question and two concerns. Okay, so the first question is, after watching the town halls, going and listening to everything, I've been getting calls from parents wanting to know when the referendum vote will be. Will it be in September? Because I have parents who are saying, Terry, have you heard anything about when it will be? Will it be in September or November? You can just clear that up for us.
At this time, there is full of our information that has been received from the state. Bond council has to be notified. We have to do a lot of, like, work to get to the point where we can move forward with the public and be transparent and have those town halls. As far as September, I don't think September is realistic, only because I believe we have to pass a resolution as early as I think this Thursday. So, you know, that makes it extremely challenging, to say the least. Where that takes us to the next day is really going to be completed once we know and have some additional documents for the architects as well as the bond council, which that's something that we're going to try to get together and make sure the public knows what those next steps are going to be.
Will the public get a written notification? Any type of written notification stating that it will be happening other than if it's not happening in November because they're ready for that race?
Yeah, well, I think we're going to try to follow the same protocol that we've followed right from the beginning. You know, our goal is to really put a presentation out with the findings, where we are, what the state numbers actually came back at, what the bond council has addressed to us as far as what numbers would look like. So I think that we're looking to populate all that and do a forum for the community once again.
Oh, so we'll have another town hall. Will it be here or?
We're not sure yet because we're going to try to decide what facility, whether it's going to be the high school or the auditorium here. We're going to make sure that we're going to be able to satisfy the need for anyone who wants to be here. So we want to make sure that there's enough chairs for everyone who wants to attend.
Okay, good. Okay. Now, I have a concern in regards to, and I have like a little history about this. When NPM first started, about a year or two after working with parents, the district started their own autistic program. And they started it over in Radcliffe School. And the students that have started there have moved over to Lincoln through the years and to middle school. And now some of the students that are at the high school, going into the high school level, being autistic, it's challenging for them. They are not the, the types of students that have been there in the past have been caught with the impaired students, the students with whom I have mobility issues, but the autistic students who may have some psychiatric issues, it's becoming a concern for some parents. I did receive some bumbles from parents stating that they're uncomfortable with their children going into a high school setting, where the doors are open, it's an open campus, the expectation level, there's fifteen hundred people over there, it's loud. And for someone with sensory integration disorder, you could just understand. And some of them might have psychiatric, like I said, psychiatric issues, they might have psychotic episodes. I'm not a psychiatrist, I can't state, but most of these children are on medications. So it's hard for a district, and I know some districts at this type of point, they say, okay, you know what, it's time to go out, it's time to put these children into, especially because you're going to be able, you have to educate them until they're twenty-one, it's time for them to find another program. But it seems to be somewhat of a resistance here because maybe they, the district does feel that they could be accommodated in the high school, but we're finding that our concerns are that what happens if we have a kid who's a runner? I mean, the district is responsible. If he runs out of the building and into traffic, that becomes a real concern. We've already had issues where police had to be involved, and it's just, it shouldn't have happened in that type of, we just would like to be more proactive as opposed to reactive. So we'd like for you to please consider that as a board, to really from now on going forward, recognize that some kids just can't make it in the high school. And it's nothing against the high school. The high school has done wonderful things for so many children. And I want Mr. Williams to be mad at me, but it's the truth. I mean, I do believe that. So, but there are some kids that just would be better off in a specialized setting. Like most autistic programs, they have maybe forty kids in it. There's fifteen hundred people. You just, you just can't have the same type of environment. So that's just one concern. My second concern was in regards to, I'm glad that we talked about the harassment, intimidation, and bullying. And I know I've sat through many of them with Mr. Capella, and I, Mr. Capella is wonderful. And I just think that, and I know I stood here at one point when you first came on, and I asked you, what happens if it's not a student-to-student altercation, but a student-to-teacher or administrator altercation? Then what happens? And you said to me, I remember, well, that all comes through my?
Still an investigation, it still works the same way.
So theoretically, what happens if we have the investigation and what the parents have wanted in regards to their resolution has not been reached? What can a parent do at this point? I mean, I really think legally, and that kind of pulls into what Mrs. Sherman was saying about going into, what are their rights in this situation? Because if you're really thinking, it's one thing to say, and my own kids have been involved in situations with other students, and it's the same peer level, but it's when it's an adult and authority figure, it's different. And you have kids who really are now, they have issues with going, they could be school phobic, they might have to go into therapy. It becomes a real issue for them. So what do we say to those parents in order to make them feel better?
Well, the process remains the same, right? You do the investigation, you get the outcome of the investigation, the parent gets the letter with the outcome of the investigation. The next step, if they don't agree with that, is to appeal to the board. The board then can, you know, listen to their appeal and to their concerns. If the board doesn't satisfy their need, then there's a process that goes all the way up through the state. And of course, they also do always have their own recourse.
So that's at this point. At any point would, because I remember an incident that happened many years ago when my own child was in, and actually it happened after, it was in regards to a teacher that was actually removed from their position. And I didn't even realize it, and someone had said to me, you know, this particular individual was just removed. And it actually happened in the district I was working in as well. There was a staff member that was inappropriate with students, and that person was removed from there. I think the frustration is if the parent continues to see that that same person is there and there might be contact between that individual and their child. That's, I think, where the.
But again, they have to follow the process because we aren't going to be aware of that, and that's not something that can be discussed, right? Those are personnel issues and political issues.
Okay.
So they have to follow the procedure and the course of action.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Michael Udrih, one thirty-three High Street. I just want some clarification. Because I know she asked a question before, I want to ask it my way. According to Essex County, the deadline for the Board of Ed to submit an application to hold a referendum election is July twenty-eighth for a vote in September. Does the Board of Ed intend to vote before the voters within referendum in September? Yes or no?
The answer at this point is going to, I would have to say, is no. We're not going to be able to put everything together and do the appropriate thing with the public and be as transparent as we've been in up to this point by pushing forward for a date to go to ballot in September. That would not be a respectable thing to do on our end as a board. And I don't think with all of what we've done up to this point to show our transparency would be the appropriate thing to do.
Well, I'm happy to see that you're transparent. I just want to make sure about that. I mean, obviously, you guys know I'm opposed to this referendum. And just this past weekend, and I talked to many homeowners, we just got our August property tax bill. And all our property tax bills for August, in August quarter, is another two hundred dollars over last year's August property tax bill. And if this referendum, this seventy-point-four million property tax hike referendum that you wish to have imposed on us, or whatever you want to call it, is going to make all these quarters higher than it normally should be. So a lot of homeowners that I've spoken to, they're terrorized by it. Because this could be like the thing that puts them right out of Nutley. I think there's, I just read a website, two hundred and thirty-eight homes are off the sale now in Nutley. It's out of control, and this will definitely kick out many generations of families that have been in this town for all these decades and scores of years. And I hope you really take into consideration what you guys are doing to us, homeowners. And I hope you pull back because seventy-four percent of the homeowners in this town do not have children in the public, Nutley Public School system. And what you guys are asking us to do is subsidize other people's children's education. We need that money for our retirement, for our own health care, and we need that money to put food on our own tables. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Blair Nettle, one fifty Ridge Road. My first question is, many of us signed up to be parts on committees regarding the referendum, and to date, I don't believe any of us referred to anyone. So we're all curious about when we're going to be contacted.
We're going to use a Charlie Tarpier suit. Sorry.
Until we have the paperwork.
Yeah, and I was going to say, and there is a lot of names on that list, but we, we think it would be just premature to start putting these committees together at this point in time. It's just not, and I would think that as we get towards that town hall and we get the information out to the public, it's going to be really the time when those committees would be forming a committee.
Okay, my second note is, just as co-fundraiser chairman of the Nutley Learning Tree or the Nutley Educational Foundation, I just wanted to give a quick, very exciting update. You may all remember that we talked about when we provided grants in the, I think it was the June fifth meeting, we talked a little bit about the Nutley Learning Tree, which is a microfunding project for teachers in the community to submit projects of fifty dollars to five hundred dollars that our wish is that they might normally not fund through the budgeting process. So we launched the tree in late March of two thousand seventeen. To date, we fulfilled, fully fulfilled, eight hundred dollars worth of wishes, six different wishes. We have activity bands that went to Ms. Drapie in Spring Garden. We have neat seats that went to Ms. Sean Simeon, I'm not pronouncing her name wrong, in Washington. Learning map with kinetic sand and drawing and writing touchboards for Ms. Pea in Yanacaw. Penciled ribbed chair socks for Ms. Dwyer in Yanacaw, and seat sacks for Mrs. Mitchell in Yanacaw. If anyone is interested in contributing, we still have two wishes that were submitted that haven't been funded, for a zero-waste box submitted for the Green Rangers in the Spring Garden School, and for the next-generation robot from the Lincoln School. And we expect to have many more wishes coming to us as we move into the seventeen, eighteen school year. I encourage you all to go to the NEF website and look at the wishes, and any contribution helps. You don't have to fund a full wish, you can provide ten dollars, and little by little, those wishes are getting funded. So we thank the public. We've had donations from parents, grandparents, foundations, community members, and so many people that have raised the program. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Hi, Donna. We're out of thirty-four minutes. We'll change it in. I have two errors, but since everybody's starting to talk about the referendum, I'm going to bring my first in, my second. As I was looking through the board minutes, May twenty-third and May twenty-second, two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen, if you could just explain the difference between a bond, a transfer bond for thirty-five, thirty-eight million, and it comes from a special school election from December twelfth, two thousand and six, and that's what's in the notes. Can you explain how that works different? Is that a referendum from our last time? Or is this coming from some sort of, is this on top of the seventy million you want us to vote for? Or how does this, how does a transfer bond work? That's my question.
I know, but you're better off. You're better suited than that.
All of that is referencing the referendum that was passed in December of two thousand and six. So that was a thirty-eight-point-five million dollar bond. And as we are concluding the spending of those funds, we are moving money from one project to another because the basic expenditures of the reasons for those bonds, such as the roofs and the HVAC and the window upgrades, were completed. So now we are finishing up with security projects. And the board is allowed to move the funds from, let's say, Spring Garden to Radcliffe to accommodate those security upgrades. So that's what we are doing with those resolutions, just transferring the money that was identified as going to Spring Garden, let's say, to Yanacaw, or vice versa. Has nothing to do with the proposed future referendum?
Okay. But did it have to do with the proposed last referendum? That was, what was this vote from December twelfth, two thousand and six?
That was the last referendum that took place in the district.
So this one continued to keep on going?
So the taxpayers approved a bond of thirty-eight-point-five million dollars, and we are finishing up spending that money.
Okay.
The remaining funds from that bond referendum.
Because like the Washington School, like, you know, all that was included in here.
Yes.
So I just wanted to clear that up because I wasn't quite sure. Okay, so what I'm going to speak about today, I'm going to speak on behalf of the substitutes that come in from AESOP and that have always been Nutley, a lot of Nutley people, and now we get people in from other districts because of AESOP and what we call it SAMs in my district. The subs in Nutley have been making seventy-five dollars. And I know you got to last month, I couldn't make last month's meeting to eight. In many districts in the surrounding towns, they're making a hundred, they're making a hundred-ten. And I do understand that sometimes the dynamics is a little different than the surrounding areas. But what happens even in my district is that they will find, when they're on AESOP, and then another job comes from another district that's higher paying, they will say, well, I'm not going to go to Nutley for seventy-five dollars, I'm going to go to Clifton for a hundred. And they cancel AESOP, which causes us to be short subs, which is not always a good thing. But what happens even in my district is that they will find, when they're on AESOP, and then another job comes from another district that's higher paying, they will say, well, I'm going to go to 75 dollars, I'm going to go to Clifton for 100. And they cancel AESOP, which causes us to be short subs, which is not always a good day. So as I was looking, that's when I found out about the referendum. But what AESOP had on May 26th, you had half a day for 12:30, was a professional development day. AESOP had it listed as a full day. There was about approximately 20 teachers or staff members that hold out a day before holiday. Past practice, they have always paid the subs the full day pay. Now they decided on from May 26th, without it ever being approved by the board, that they are going to pay them, they have the day 3750, even staying at 12:30. Then what happened, when a few phone calls made, they got their $10.71. Is it possible that approximately $700 was going to break the bank? When you want a $70 million referendum pass? Because that would be about what you would owe these subs.
So I'm going to tell you that that is definitely within the scope of what happens on a daily, so that I'm going to refer over to Karen or Dr. Glazer. If either of you would not have been certain of the response or the answer, let me give you some research and maybe get back to you.
Well, if you don't, then that's a problem. Why don't I?
Okay, so what I will say is, is that I have been taking notes, so I will investigate that. And if you'd like, we could make a public comment about it at the next meeting, we can...
Or at least let the subs know, let them know that at 12:30, they're going to be paid now, they're going to pay $40, and then maybe $11 on top of that. They should know that, and that being part of AESOP, AESOP has it listed as a full day, which I understand, because it doesn't always go...
That's what we're trying to confirm, because it is a full day.
Because if it wasn't a full day, it was a, half day was a professional day. I understand, but the pay...
So we are starting to have conversations about that, and the possibility of just making the sub assignment a full day assignment and using the sub for other things for the full day.
Okay.
Some don't get into that half day or half day plus an hour.
Well, because then if the subs know this, then you're going to lose a lot of subs for those half days if they know that, you know, that they're only going to be paid for that now. But I'm just really talking because for years now, they have been talking, past administrators, past board members, past teachers, past everybody, we've been making $75 forever. And meanwhile, other towns are making 100. But the entree is trying to say you're losing, you're losing the subs for other towns. And that's what happens. And I just don't think it was right to have these people get paid 3750. And it became a pretty good deal from what I experienced. So I say please pay them for the full day. Thank you for your time consideration. Or put it in a policy, then, so they at least know. Thank you.
Run through the...
I just heard.
Two seconds.
Current number.
Anyone else wishing to be heard? Right? Any old business to come before the board? Any new business? Whereas the Board of Education will be discussing matters exempt from public discussion pursuant to NJSA 10:4-12, now therefore be a result of the Board of Education recessed closed executive session at this time to discuss the matter. Personnel property acquisition be a further result of the results of the discussion will be made public by inclusion on the agenda of subsequent meetings of the Board of Education or when the reasons for discussing such matters are superseded, no longer exist, formal action may be taken. We need a motion to...
I have a motion. I want to go to session.
All in favor?